Okay, welcome to us here in council chambers as well as those that may be watching from homes. It's a work session of the Pecosin City Council and we're going to talk briefly about feasibility study that was done for Emergency Operations Center, Fire Administration, Police Facilities within the city of Pecosin, get the results of that study. Did we add anything else to...
That's it.
This is it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna make sure of that. And so Randy, how would you all like to proceed with introducing this?
Sure, with you all, make a brief introduction and then I'll introduce the two representatives from Guernsey Tingle who are here this evening. Council members, you will recall approximately this time last year, you approved upon a recommendation of Planning Commission, the comprehensive plan for the period that we're now in. And one of the recommendations of that plan was that the city undertake a feasibility study to look at whether or not it was cost effective and whether or not we would benefit from some economies of scale to locate together a new police department, a new fire administration, and an emergency operation functions. We, you appropriated money to help us with that study approximately the end of first quarter of last, of this calendar year, and we have been engaged with that ever since. Bringing this back to, we are on schedule, this is exactly when we had hoped to bring it back to you. We contracted our team that worked on this was myself, Assistant City Manager, Director of Finance, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, and their respective Assistant or Deputy Chiefs. And you'll remember Deputy Chief Brian actually also serves as our Emergency Services Coordinator, so all of us were at least a half or a half and a half in that process. Tonight, we have with us Andy Cronin and Tom Tingle from Guernsey Tingle. They are a architect and engineering group out of Williamsburg, and they are going to briefly introduce themselves and then walk you through this study.
Look forward to it. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good to be here. I am Tom Tingle, President of Guernsey Tingle, and I'd like to give just a little bit of background on the team.
Could you push your mic button, please, Tom?
I'm sure.
Push the talk head.
There you go.
Okay. We forget to...
Back on? All right, thanks. I'm gonna briefly walk you through the team and then turn it over to Andy Cronin. Andy's the Senior Vice President for Guernsey Tingle and actually was working on the team with the, with the city on the feasibility study. A little bit of background on us, we have been on the peninsula here for about three and a half decades, medium-sized firm, architects, planners, and interior designers. We also reach out of our firm for engineering consultants as needed, do a lot of work with municipalities similar to Pecosin. That's including counties and cities on the peninsula, Williamsburg, James City County, Newport News, Hampton, as well as a variety of other clients that we've worked with. And a lot of public safety projects. We have ongoing public safety work in Chesterfield right now. We actually have three fire stations that are either in construction or in design, work for the city of Williamsburg, and then other federal clients such as Defense Supply Center Richmond, Norfolk Naval Base. Our specialty expert on this, Stuart Cooper Newell, is a firm that we've been working with for about 10 years now. They are based in North Carolina. And in addition to our experience, Stuart Cooper Newell brings a tremendous amount of experience with other municipal fire and police companies and localities. The acronyms are too hard to read for those of us that are late people, but they do work in consulting with International Association of Chiefs of Police, Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, Fire Industry Education, Resource Organizations, just a tremendous amount of work and a lot of experience in years doing these kinds of studies. One that this team just completed and is actually working on right now in a second round is a similar study for the city of Williamsburg where they had us look at their existing fire and EOC stations downtown, the police station, resulting in both analysis that recommended improvements to an existing station, but also construction of new stations, both downtown and other parts of the city. So that's kind of the background, and Andy gets to talk about the methodology and what we found out for the city of Pecosin.
I'll try and keep it simple. So we enjoyed working with your team. They're just a delight to work with, really excellent folks. We touched on basically three things. We wanted to look at the space needs, both the current needs, program needs for each of these three entities, and also look into the future. Obviously, you're not building a facility that's for today. You don't want it to be outdated soon to build it, so we're planning for the future. And also looking at existing department operations, some of the challenges operationally that they now are facing, and then also looking at the facilities themselves. And how can we take an objective, bring you objective data about what those look like and what the challenges are there? So we did, just as a quick overview, we did basically, we assessed the physical conditions of the existing facilities. Then we looked at the assets and the shortcomings, both of the buildings and the sites. So each of those were challenged, as you can see a couple of shots here, we'll look at it a little bit more in a minute. And then we looked from a space needs analysis standpoint at, you know, what's the growth anticipated, what are these, what will be the current and future staffing needs, what are some of the site challenges from a kind of sea level rise standpoint and some of those other things. And then looking at the question of co-location, looking at the issues associated with them, the benefits of co-locating facilities, the challenges that there might be. And then finally, or second to last, I guess, looking at what the cost ramifications of those options might be, and what are the benefits from that standpoint of co-locating facility?
Can you guys just...
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Council, and particularly for anyone that's watching at home, I realize that the small lettering and the numbers may be very difficult to see. Just know that this entire report is linked to our agenda this evening, so if you were to visit the city council's homepage and link to their agenda, the whole report is there in a much more readable format.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Randy. The last task that we had as part of our charge was to provide a tool for the city to be able to analyze sites. This wasn't actually part of what we were charged to do, but to analyze the sites, but the tool is a means by which you can objectively look at the pluses and minuses of different sites that you might want to look at as you consider relocating and co-locating facilities. So we took a look at then some of the operational challenges and shortcomings of these existing facilities and sites. And one of the building in the upper left there that you see is, of course, the old municipal building where the fire administration is now, along with a portion of the police program as well, Drug Task Unit. And that is actually located in quite a low-lying area, as you probably know. I think the elevation roughly there is around five, five, five and a half. It's also a metal building, I believe, and the fire administration's on the second floor with no elevator to be able to have public be able to access it if they're, have accessibility issues. So there's kind of a number of challenges there, but having said that, the fire administration is, have basically an adequate amount of space in that, in that location, so that's a good thing. Down on the bottom, it's not a very good picture, but it's a little shot of the conference room next door to the council chamber here, which serves as EOC facility. And frankly, it was hard to kind of get a good shot of that because it's fairly tight. One of the challenges, and one of the major challenges of the EOC facility is frankly, the space challenges. It's very tight in there, all the equipment is stored in there, and of course, it's also has to be set up every time there's an event. So it makes it a challenge to train because it disrupts other things that need to go on in that space and that kind of thing. And then finally, the police facility that you see in the upper right there is the one that probably has the most challenges. You can see these site shots looking down on the facility. Facility is also used to park buses, school buses. It's an old bank building, as you all well know, and has a lot of storied history probably that I'm not even aware of. But the challenge is that it's constrained on the right side and on the left side here, west and east side. So any additions to the facility would be challenging to make. In addition to that, there's actually an elevation marker out by the street that sets the elevation at 6.2 feet. So the current 2014 standard in the city would dictate that that should be at 11 feet. So you can imagine the challenge of, if you wanted to get that up to where it should be elevation-wise, you'd have to substantially raise the site. The building is also approximately a third the size that it needs to be from a space standpoint. So there are a number of challenges. Additionally, as you can see from the right photo there, aerial, basically you can drive right through the site, so there's security issues. Modern police facilities, you're trying to create a secure zone where it's safe for the folks that work there, and there are many, many ways in which this is not safe from a standpoint of sight. These are just a picture on the right there of how close the, the police facility is to the dump truck next door there. So it's not much of a standoff distance to protect people. This is a, just kind of a sketch of the floor plan of the building. The challenges on the inside of the building are many. Again, it's space constrained in a, in a large way. It's also has some significant security issues. I believe the next shot here on the right-hand side, you can see there's basically a glass door straight to the outside there, so from a security and safety of the police internal of the building, that is a very unsafe condition. Also very space constrained. The left side there is the evidence storage area, which is very tight, and currently evidence is being processed on the desk of one of the folks in the department. So it's definitely not ideal. Storage is challenged, as you can see there in the center as well. So in addition, when they have detainees brought in, they're brought in the right end of the plan there, and they come into a common area that's used for many different functions. So there's no separation of the, of those folks. When they need to go to the bathroom, they have to go to a bathroom that's shared by all the staff in the building. And then when they go to be interrogated or interviewed, they're run through the entire building up to the upper left-hand corner to the interview room. So there's some real challenges with just function of the building. In addition to fire safety concerns, there's just a single stair going upstairs with no kind of rated access. We architect nerds would say that's not a safe condition. So there's, as you can see, a number of challenges. I think the police department would be to be really commended for the excellent way that they've, the services they provide to the community from this facility with some challenges that they have. So we then had pretty detailed discussions with each of the department staffs, excellent sit-down sessions, really talked through the details, walked through the buildings, kind of saw their existing things, existing conditions, but then also brought our kind of expertise to bear, saying, you know, what should this be? What, we understand what's there now, but what, what's really needed in a modern police facility and a modern EOC facility? And that brought us to develop these programs and just quickly go through these. And I, I don't want to take you through all the details, they're in your study that you have there, and you can look in more detail. But these are, for the Emergency Operations Center space, these are the basic requirements that are needed in, in a typical EOC space when it's standalone. In this case here, in this building, some of these needs are met by shared facilities. So that's the way it's operating now. So the bottom line is, there's a need for 3453 square feet, which is a pretty, a good bit more than you have now. But again, it's because partly it's sharing facilities, things like restrooms and, and that kind of thing. Terms of fire administration, as I said before, the basic needs, space needs of the fire administration are actually pretty well met where they currently are, but they're in a place where they're not in a really safe building for that kind of critical facility, essential facility. And they are sharing also things like restrooms, and as I said before, they have no elevator access. So again, at the bottom there, you'll see about 2,600 square feet, just a little bit more is needed to accommodate that function. And then the police department has these kinds of needs, some of which are in the building now and some of which aren't. For example, locker rooms, there are no locker rooms in the existing facilities. Typically, police facilities, the patrol have locker facilities, showers, things like that, that support them being able to carry out their duties. There's no Sallyport, which is something that's used as kind of technical speak for a space that they allows the police department to bring in detainees in a secure way and transfer them into the building, as well as to store large evidence. So if they have a vehicle or a van or something like that that was part of evidence for, they can bring that right into that Sallyport and process it. So other things, you'll see there, evidence, storage, many of these are significantly undersized or not actually in the building currently. So the total need there is 15,459 square feet, and that's a little bit more than three times what is in the building now. So how about co-location? How does that help us? So essentially, by co-locating facilities, you're able to share things like restrooms, share conference room space, various other kinds of spaces like that that allow us to shrink the building just from a kind of standpoint of sharing space. In addition to that, you get some synergies and efficiencies that come with having folks like the fire department co-located with an EOC facility that they operate, essentially operate. So those are the benefits. So we did a kind of study and were able to save approximately 11 and a half percent, about 2,500 square feet by, if we were to co-locate the facilities into one location. And then looking at costs, these are a lot of numbers. The red boxes are kind of the, maybe the highlight, and down at the bottom is really probably the real highlight. We looked at this from a kind of standpoint of what are typical construction costs going on these days, and we're seeing, they frankly range from $350 to $425 per square foot for this, these kinds of facilities. They're essential facilities, so they're built to a higher standard, and there's a lot of security measures and IT needs and things like those built in. So using the high-range number, $400 a square foot, the number on the right column, you'll see the top box is just construction, so construction for the site and for the building would put that at just under $9 million for the entire facility if you built each one of these entities separately. That's what that number represents. If you were in the second box down, if you were to co-locate these facilities, that reduces the amount of square footage that you need down from 21.5 to 19,000 square feet. So that obviously pulls the cost down. Instead of, it's at 8.9, you're down to 7.9. And then that gives you the collate, the kind of benefit of the collated facilities, but the construction costs of a project like this are not the only costs. So there are other costs which include design, things like utility fees, FFNE, kind of fitting out the building, buying furniture and the equipment that's needed, those kinds of things. All of those are basically usually about 20% of the overall cost of the project. So construction site and building is usually about 80% of the cost, and then the other part, which you might call soft costs, is about 20%. So the bottom number on the right down there, the 9.99, is just shy of 10 million, is the projected cost for the overall project, not including any site acquisition costs. So if you build a building on city land, then that would be the number that you'd be targeting right there. So I think that is, aside from the site evaluation matrix, I think that that is essentially what we wanted to share with you tonight. So I'm glad to answer any questions. I hope I didn't glaze your eyes over too much in all of that information, but we're glad to address any questions you might have.
Council, you got any questions? I'll tell you, I appreciate the high-level view, and I did get a chance to read through some of this narrative. I don't really have any questions of the study itself. I think I've got lots of questions when it comes down to the city staff and council about, you know, what's our plan going ahead. But as far as the study itself, does anybody have any questions? Okay. Well, that's, and really appreciate what you've done. And Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm kind of looking for the road ahead here from the next step. We've asked staff to do a overall integrated look at the city. This was a piece of that, you know, whatever we are doing with public safety facilities, with schools, with infrastructure, all kind of ties together at some point in time. And I think, so the plan for bringing that back to council?
Glad to address that. As council will recall, in addition to asking us to move forward with the feasibility study at your retreat last, I think it may have been December, so a year ago, you also put us on a path to complete the city's first-ever master infrastructure plan, which is really the, what I call kind of the implementation guide between the five-year CIP and the 20-year comprehensive plan. And we, that, we estimated that would take two years. We're about halfway through time-wise, and we're on schedule. We're right where we expect to be. And we're looking at the things originally suggested by the Planning Commission, such as stormwater and roads and sewer. But you also asked us to look at public facilities, including outdoor recreational facilities, but also physical space. And we've included in there as well, things like sidewalks and, and others. So we're making good progress on all of those things, and, and this was one of those pieces. And it's an important part, both of standalone, but also as we look at city space generally, because should we decide to move forward with this project, it will most likely create some empty space, and we would need to plan for that as well. So we're, we're right where we expected to be.
Okay. So council, have any questions on that?
I'll do it.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. In your estimate of the site that it would take, 2.75 to 3 acres, and it says with room for safety spaces, does that 3 acres include that safety spaces, or do you need more for those?
No, that includes it, yes.
I have a question. From reading this study, I understand that building on the current site, even if we went up to multiple levels, is not feasible. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Well, I just have a general comment pertaining to going forward. Most of y'all have heard me say this before. I oppose phase twos, because we just don't do phase twos very well. I'd like to just build a thing and get it done with, if we decide that.
Okay. As Randy says, a lot of domino effects that will come out of this discussion. I think it's a good discussion going forward. Your population numbers back on slide one, can you get back to that?
Sure.
Now Randy, this really is, is for you. When you look at those, does that have the numbers here around City Hall incorporated into that?
I believe that is the number from the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And so I think the answer to that question is actually no, because it wasn't a all-the-way-approved project by the time that that was done.
And just, you know, so what we're talking about is legacy, what wraps around City Hall is about 500 or so homes. But we don't know how many, how that delta works as far as what, you know, due to sea level rise or land subsidence, whichever one you want to talk about, or whether it is, is how does that affect households throughout? It's a very difficult number for us to, to come up with, but I just want to make sure that as we're doing the studies going forward, that we've kind of put that thought process in there. Okay, because that would affect number of firemen, number of policemen, number of students, any variation of things.
We, we do project that each of the, the police department, fire department, EOC doesn't really have any of its own standalone stuff, did, was asked to look into the future, and so there is a... and so there is a, you'll see, some of the staff we have, and some of it is projected is increased in the future. So we attempted to do that, but in answer to your question, the numbers we used came right out of the city's adopted comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just saying, as we go, the next step, we just need to probably take a turn on those numbers and make sure that's what we're comfortable with.
We did discuss that with Chief Bowen and during, especially during the course of our program discussions, too.
And he said he needed less policemen overall?
Absolutely, yeah. He said, "A ton need as many as..."
That must have been the one meeting I was in.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. Okay. Nothing else, and we can adjourn the work session unless, there's no action here.
There is, there is no specific action. You had mentioned when you first began your comments, discussion about sort of next steps. Whenever council is ready to go to the next step, there are two things that I think we need to do that can be done sequentially, or they can be done at the same time. One is to, to look at the financial analysis, what can we afford and what does that mean? And the other is the site selection process. The site selection process helps us begin to answer some of those question marks, and staff is prepared whenever council is ready to, to make best possible speed on, on both of those, as you may direct.
Okay. So next time, recommendations from council, when do y'all want to talk about, when's the next scheduled brief of council on overall plan?
Overall of this?
Not of this, overall of, what's your next plan to brief council on the overall city's study?
Master Infrastructure Plan, probably a year from now.
Okay. So why don't we set up something to revisit this in the first quarter of '20?
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Can I come in with that? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate your work. Really appreciate it. And good brief, great level, thanks.